I have a call, workshop session order. I spoke to Leroy, he is pretty ill tonight, so he's not going to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight, Eric Ferris will be doing a presentation for us related to a development issue in Castle Hills. This is an area, when we took the tour with Mr. Bright the other night, that he stopped and he talked about his vision for this area. This is an area with multifamily and retail, very different from what exists in Castle Hills at this point in time. So we thought it'd be good to spend a little bit more time and walk you through the issues and the specific variances. And Mr. Ferris is well-prepared to do so. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mary Castle, real quick, I'd like to introduce an important team member here, sitting here is Ms. Tamara Brooks. She really runs the department, so she gets all the credit. We also have members of the Bright Realty and Castle Hills crew here. Eric, would you please introduce those here in the room?
Yes, I'm Eric Stanley with Bright Realty. Chris would be here tonight, but we're having the Bright Realty Big Brothers and Big Sisters Golf Tournament out at the club. And somebody's got to him to see the big awards at night. It wasn't even real much of a contest, to use here. To my far right is Brian Dench with Land Design, local civil engineer, land planner and designer. Keith Whitline out with Land Design out of Charlotte is here often. Brett Crocker, partner with Land Design, who is also here often. John Ward is the design architect of both the bridges of the entire realm. And back there in the corner is gentleman by the name of Bill Bikes. He's a partner with J.B.R.A., who is the lead architect for the Bridges Project.
Welcome, Mayor Warren.
Mr. Murphy, both here as well. Okay, Council, this was something that you had seen on the tour. This is an exciting development, south of 121, all the way down to 534 Parker Road. Josie kind of on the east end, and it butts up against the old Pasquenelli Development to the west. The realm is 362 acres. This is going to be divided into two subsets. The northern part, north of Windhaven is the bridges at the realm. 99 acres plus or minus, this will be a very unique mixed-use urban-style development. You'll have multifamily units above all retail, service, office, restaurant uses. You'll have some standalone, and my pointer's not working here, I don't miss things, I'm just here with you. You'll have some standalone products here with some retail and some restaurant in the northern sector of the bridges. They will have some very unique multifamily. So what Trump, it's glass, it won't shine very well. You'll have some very unique urban-style multifamily mixed-use units above the retail and the restaurant uses. So you're going to see some pictures of this, it's very different from what we've seen. This is a true mixed-use product. There's not many in the Metroplex that have this type of makeup. We'll get a look at that in a minute. The green is Discovery at the realm, 263 plus or minus acres. This is your typical, it's not your typical garden-style apartments in this area. This again is going to be urban-styled apartment units that will look different. They'll be on the roadways, and by the way, this development is all private. There's no public streets here. Inside, there's no public streets, so these are all private developments. They're going to utilize mutual access easements, access easements, and other just driveways. So there's no public rights-of-way involved here on the realm, either with Bridges or Discovery. This is just a conceptual layout of what they're envisioning that may be in 16, 18, 20 years down the road at build-out. You'll notice the mixed-use to the north of Windhaven. Again, you'll see some slides here in a minute that kind of show what they're envisioning with that, with the retail and the living units above. You'll see their apartments to the south or in Discovery with a lot of water features, a lot of green. And we're going to talk about that here in a minute. This is going to be pedestrian-friendly. The buildings will be up on the mutual access easement, look like streets, and they're not streets, but it'll look like that. So it's not going to be both garden-style apartments like we have in the city. A very unique development. The bridges, I believe Eric, y'all call this the Crescent. This is kind of their center core, where you see the retail working on the bottom floor with office and some restaurants and some pedestrian-type features here with the loft-style, urban-style multifamily units above. They're looking at four to five stories. Again, there will be no multifamily units standalone in the bridges, and they will all be above a commercial use. Another view, I believe this is kind of from 121, looking into it, you see the cinema, you see the retail below, you see the loft apartments above. Again, a very different product than what really, you know, we've seen, this very unique, there's not many in the Metroplex that are going to the style that they're looking toward. This is Bridges. Now we're going to go south to the multifamily development, south of Windhaven, this is Discovery. These have had different names through the years, and it's very difficult for me to keep them straight. We had the Kingdom several years ago, that was the realm. We've had different names, but Discovery at the realm is what they're calling their very unique multifamily, south of Windhaven. Again, a lot of pedestrian, a lot of open parks, the greenery, a lot of waterworks, they're still having a moat around the entire development. Again, another look at it, their unique style, it's just something that we haven't seen in Lewisville, for that matter, Metroplex doesn't have many of them. Mochonburg Station and a few other infills, but this has a chance to be one of the larger ones in the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex. Let's talk a little bit about how Castle Hills works, do a little summary of how we operate the city. 1996 agreement, the city agreed in our ETJ to govern the lands by the 96 agreement, which at the time, the 96 agreement said that we would take the general development ordinance in effect at that time, and that would be their bible, their code book. And it still is work effectively to this day, and that's how they're operating as we speak. There was an attachment exhibit seat of that that had several dozen variances that were previously approved for parking, for landscaping, for various other aspects, there wasn't any life safety variances approved, but they were all unique variances that they needed to pull off this mixed-use development. Castle Hills is not subject to zoning. Zoning categories are chosen on the plat, so the idea is that they conform transzoning ordinance when we annex them, or at least it puts lot lines, puts setbacks, it's put densities or things, and it's worked well since we've done that. Preliminary and final plats are processed as normal. The city takes those in, we do the turnaround, the plan reviews, through city staff and all the franchise utilities. Soon as the plat's good to go, we send that to the Plating and Zoning Commission if there's a variance that will come to council, just like any normal plat would be. The engineering site plans, a little different here. Here's where we start to differentiate that the Denton County Freshwater Supply District actually hires a third-party plan reviewer that's agreeable to the city, and they do a private agreement, a private review of the engineering site plan. We'll do a currency review side by side with them, generally that's one review or two, just to kind of watch and help them along. But right now, it's either going to be Land Design or Bob Wright that is doing those third-party reviews of their engineering site plans. Remember, engineering site plans are associated with commercial uses, not single-family. Engineering site plans are required for multifamily, so that's worked well. We work well with their staff through the years, so we've not had an issue there. Denton County Freshwater Supply, they'll issue permits and those associated inspections. They'll issue building permits, they'll issue your fire permits, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing and trade permits. Their staff follows up with the associated inspections, so that's worked well. This mixed-use product, again, I can't tell you how hard the city staff has worked over the last five months to really a year and a half working toward the realm. They've worked closely with the Bright staff and their civil engineers, their architectural folks and whatnot, trying to make this development successful and to realize that it's probably not something that our GDO is cut out for, nor probably any city's typical code book when you deal with mixed use. So a few things I wanted to kind of talk about, typically a variety of uses, retail, restaurant, office, and medical, and a mixed-use product, offered in a very unique urban-style developments, utilize, this is a big difference here. They utilize shared cross-line concepts for parking, landscape, and pedestrian easements. Kind of think about CDX, they have their own parking lot, they've got their building, they've got their driveways, and they be all they can be on their property. When a mixed-use development, you have to throw that concept out, because it's typically not a building with a big old parking lot, and they're segregated and everything looks the same. You kind of have to throw that mindset out of your thinking, when you use your toolbox, and start thinking about cross-lines and shared things, and try to open up your mind to thinking about that. And I'm not talking about the electrical, mechanical, or plumbing code, but more of the typical site requirements that are proprietary to just that one lot. You have to share them and make them work across lot lines, and they've done a good job of doing this, and we're going to see this in a minute. Again, we talked about it, it doesn't fit conventional code. We started, like I said, a year and a half ago, we had 31, was it 31 or 29, I lost count, but 29 plus or minus variances in the first cemental that we had. And through discussions and talking with them, we've narrowed that down to 10. Again, none of these are life safety variances, I call them more uniquenesses to the mixed-use product. So let's get into these. Variance A is simply, and this is an oldie but a goodie, is to allow onsite public water lines on private property under pavement. Years ago, we took the building out of that in the city, we had issues with it, but as time has marched on, it's not as big an issue as it's been in the past. Code requirement, only onsite water lines you can have, has to be grass on the easements. You can have driveways that cross, it's not a problem. We've had several similar variances that have been proved by council, Louisville Town Crossing, Heber 121 Station. They'll still have water line easements, I'll show you a profile in a minute, but it'll be under private pavement. But again, to follow suit, they've agreed that the real property owner would maintain the pavement once if either Denton County Freshwater Supply has to repair the line, or if we annex and it's us, then the real property owner will put the pavement back, and that gets us out of that responsibility. You see Mr. Ferris is smiling on that one.
I got a question. You're talking about just pavement-only, no structures, right?
Yes. These are going to be in your street easements, mutual access easements going down the streets as if they were streets, but they're not. It's really the only way that mixed-use products work to this nature. There are some cities that say they have mixed use, but I call it 95/5, where they have 95% apartments and 5% retail or something. This breakout here on Bridges is a million plus or minus commercial square footages.
Yeah, so roughly a million and a half of office, retail, and other commercial uses, somewhere between a million and a million and two apartments.
True mix, unlike the others. Again, staff, we have no issue with this, we've looked at it, and you can see on the profile. This is a typical profile, again, it's a mutual access easement. The storm is in the middle, sanitary and water, so we have our separations. They're in the drive aisles or in the parking aisles, we're not going to have our public utilities under the trees or anything like this. So again, this is what you typically see, it's very comparable to Austin Ranch and what we did out there for the Billingsley property. This is what's done in true mixed-use developments, and we don't, staff at this point, we don't have any issues with this. By the way, all these easements, albeit it's a 28 or a 30-foot mutual access emergency easement, these contain the individual water line easements, sanitary easements, and storm sewer easements. Denton County Freshwater Supply District, but convertible to the city of Lewisville when we annex. So they'll come over to us and Jeff Kelly and Dave, and make sure that the distances are set out and they meet what we've been doing. Variance B, this is kind of simple. This is basically to allow other types of trees and plantings in the street rights-of-way. The street rights-of-way in play here, code requirement, it basically has a list in the 96 GDO. Again, that was a list that was made a long time ago, it's kind of a tired list, but they're going to use additional trees, additional plantings in the parkway. Only two streets involved here again is Windhaven and Castle Hills Drive. And this is kind of what they're envisioning, to put additional trees and shrubs, more than we would typically require a developer to do, what we maintain, they want to do drought-tolerant indigenous trees and plantings. We have a large planting book, again, they don't know exactly, but Cleve and his staff have looked at it, it looks pretty good. There are no crepe murals. Again, the idea is.
Partridge pear.
Sir?
The pear trees, I'm going to get those in there too.
We don't believe y'all have any pear trees. Let's have additional trees that aren't on the list and bushes, only in Windhaven and Castle Hills Drive and the driveway. And the big thing here is maintenance is by the Property Owners Association, they're going to maintain. And I would think that's going to be something that's going to be out there for 20, 30-plus years out there. Reverse that, and we'll do what we want to do, but I think in this case, they're going to maintain it, and again, we don't have a problem. The plantings will go to Parks Department when their plans come in. Their plans will come into Parks Department, they'll look at it at that time, and Bob will say yea or nay, and they'll work with him. So we do have a shot at that when that happens. So we don't, again, we don't see no issues here, I think it could be something that's kind of neat. C, same neighborhood, although they want to plant the trees. The code requirement on C is, we have a very regimented code back then, trees every 45 feet, shoulders and rows are in 30-foot in groups. They want to be able to mix that up and plant them a little tighter, maybe that's a particular type of tree. We don't have a problem with that, again, they're going to maintain it, they're going to send the plans over to PALS, they're going to look at it, it looks good to them, we're going to approve it. So this is a little bit different than regimented wording in our 96 GDO. And again, we're talking about Windhaven and Castle Hills. All of this down here is private property, as well as up here, these are all mutual access easements. Variance D, they're going to take the code requirement that says thou shall have one tree every 15 parking spaces and a percent of greenery on a platted lot, in its own little subset. They're taking that and saying, we want to spread that across lot lines, we want it to count across the lands. They will exceed our lot-to-lot landscaping for greenery and trees throughout. And again, it goes back to the master plan, the moat that comes around with the water and the pedestrian sidewalks and the things, and the trails throughout Discovery, if I get these names wrong, you correct me, I know you will, I feel sure. Discovery, they have, and you saw back in the slide, you saw all the greenery and the walkways in and out of the multifamily units. They want to do the same thing up in Bridges. And, you know, again, we've run some numbers, some rough numbers on their master plans, and what they're doing is going to exceed by far what's required on an onsite landscaping plan for a site plan. We don't know what the lot lines are yet, but they're going to exceed, we're going to make sure they at least exceed what we would require on each lot, and they're going to pretty much blow that out of the water of what the requirements are. So we felt comfortable in this variance that they've met the intent and gone well beyond that. Variance E, there's two parts. This is basically, we're going to talk about a 1.65 parking ratio for multifamily, and we're going to talk about a shared agreement that goes across the lot lines. And we'll flash through some exhibits here in a minute. Code requirement, let me back up. The realm is one- and two-bedroom units. There will be no three-bedroom units at this time, so it's all single and doubles throughout. Maybe it's a 60/40 mix, they're not real sure, but it's going to be pretty tight. So we ran some numbers down on Discovery, and they're pretty close to 1.65, they may even be higher than that. But they want to make sure on Bridges that they'll meet that ratio, so we went ahead and stuck it in there as a variance just to make sure. You've already approved a 1.65 for Heber 121 Station, Bell Madera, Press Manor, again, those are the one- and two-bedroom units, trying to reach the younger professional crowd, and that's their terminology, and that's their market. So again, part of this variance is maintaining a 1.65 ratio for the multifamily and to utilize these shared parking space agreements over the lands. They took, and they are meeting the parking requirements per restaurant, per office, per retail, they're meeting that. They're actually using the charts in their mixed-use part of town center in the 96 agreement. So these numbers haven't changed, and this is just some of that language that they're pulling across and applying it to the realm. An interesting thing, Cleve, you want to explain this?
Really what this is, is the chart showing the difference between the parking requirements with the 1.65 applied to it. The upper one is current code, if they met all the requirements, and then the bottom one is the proposed, which the only difference between the two is the 1.65. And when you look at it, it's explaining that mixed use is not, they assume things happening simultaneously. That parking, although the office is closed, can be used for restaurant or other things. Now what they have done is they're not sharing through cross-agreements their multifamily. If that's multifamily parking, it cannot be used for restaurant, cannot be used for office, can't be used for retail. So if it's multifamily parking regardless of the Bridges or Discovery, it's got to be dedicated as that. May not have your name on it, I'm sure Mr. Stanley's would, but it's got to be used as that. Otherwise, they're using a pretty progressive shared chart that Cleve has been familiar with, and so we ran the numbers, and it's even conventionally would be very close. So we're good with the shared concept in their agreements. Variance F, this is a little different, actually works somewhat in favor of everyone. The requirement for loading zones is generally 5,000 to 15,000 square feet. Thou shall have a big loading zone in certain square footage. What they're doing is saying, we'll match the square footage as required, we're just not going to lay it out per lot and one per, one per. In other words, the theater may be required five or six, they don't need that. So what they're doing, by the way, our 96 code, zero to 5,000 doesn't even require a loading zone, is that correct, Cleve?
Correct. So what they're doing is they're going to take that square footage and share it and disperse it around. There'll be dedicated loading zones, but they may not stick out as a nice, or they will not be in the drive aisles, but they're going to share the concept, just like they're sharing the landscaping, sharing the parking and everything else. And we have some examples of that, that, you know, this is some of the language where they're using the square footage in lieu of the space, and they're meeting that concept. This is an example of Century Oaks Terrace in Austin, where they use the same square footage and they share their loading zone. This is a tough picture to see, but an example where they use this successfully, and it's working. Another example, this one's Garden Park in Allen. What is this, I'm sorry, it's Walters Creek at Montgomery Farm in Allen. They did some neat things with their loading zones where the delivery trucks can get there, but it kind of looks kind of neat. Again, they can get tenants if they don't have loading zones. If they don't have parking, they can't get tenants. So it kind of goes hand in hand, it makes sense in a mixed-use product. Market Street at the Woodlands, again, another way, another example of how they use the shared loading zone, and by the way, the parking and everything else is the same way. The last one here is South Lake Town Square, set up the same way. And to our knowledge, they've not had any problems other than the normal few complaints you get on anything. Variance G, I thought David was going to pass out when he talked about this, we've worked on this one, this is actually a successful thing. They want to be able to use alternate materials in lieu of asphalt or concrete, they want to get creative here. Again, this is all private property, we're not talking about streets here. Let's see if we can get into these, no. In your memo, you'll see that you have, you have stone, you have brick, you have pavers, you even have some gravel, and that gravel will be crushed granite with some concrete borders that will contain it. Those, that will not be used in the main drive aisles, but they want to create some different looks. The paving will meet ADA and COA. The owner, the real property owner is going to have to maintain it, it's just going to look a little different. You can see some of their stuff here with different colors, different textures. This may be brick or stone, y'all help me out, I don't know what this is on this, but again, it's different aspects to make their parking look different. Same thing where they use pavers or stamped concrete, or maybe this is some stone working in here to the parking lots, still stripes.
That's an Austin Ranch, Eric.
There we go, Austin Ranch, yes. So a different look, you're still going to have your fire lanes marked and everything, so you can see some different styles and different products being used in their parking lots.
Has Steph talked about stormwater runoff, if these are permeable surfaces, what kind of impact that might have?
We did, Councilman, we talked about that. Some of the granite areas with the concrete borders, it's possible with some of the stone or some of the other areas to look at that. They may even look into maybe a grass creek product. We're going to make sure our fire lanes, try to be able to hold up to the impending weight of the fire trucks, delivery trucks. But we have talked to them about that, maybe some of the Brick Creek or the Grass Creek or some of those areas like that, the granite, the gravel. Obviously, that may be permeable. What we have to watch out for is again, through maintenance, most of these products, if they're installed and designed right, and put the money in it, they work. Jury's out on some of the pavement, some we've not had luck with that at Heber 121, and we feel like it was designed with concrete structure under it. But again, those are more heavily-traveled areas, I think what they're trying to do is limit it to quieter parking lots and leave the main, a lot of the main drive aisles as concrete or asphalt. But we have discussed that with them, of course, with landscaping and drought tolerant, dropped, drought tolerant plants and everything else, kind of in the mix with stormwater. And Variance H, another oldie but goodie. They're going to build the turn lanes, they just want to use a modified parkway or easements in that their dedication along 121, they already dedicated the land to the planning of 121, so what they want to do is just use easements on their property to get the turn lanes in. And you've done this, again, for several projects, along 121, Josie, Windhaven, you've done some in the city like this. It avoids the jog-in and jog-out of the building lines at the driveway locations. And again, we've done it, I'll show you kind of what we're talking about. This is just a generic example where the turn lane, the property line is the bold line here that never changes. The turn lane would come in and an easement, we get the turn lane, they build it from street to street. For the most part, everybody's happy, it just avoids the dedication and that property line moving in. And in their case, again, because they've already dedicated their portion of 121, so they wanted that. And again, that's a variance we've seen. Variance I, this is a, this is, it's a zoning issue, but we're going to do this anyway as a variance just to clarify. They want to allow dwelling units of 700 square foot average located over retail, or in other words, the bridges. They're going to meet the 850 down in Stanleyville, I had to get that in there, down in Discovery. They're going to meet the 850 down south, but they want the 700 in the urban-style loft apartments. And that's, again, it's above retail, above restaurants. The trend, what we've, staff has looked in, is their unit sizes are going down, prices are going up, actually. Places in the northeast are actually going down to 450 and 500 square feet. They put a bottom ceiling of no less than 500 square feet, but the trend in these type of units, when you saw the pictures, less, higher cost, and that's appealing to their prospects. So this is a variance the code requires, 850. But again, that's your typical, maybe not your typical apartment-style requirement. So it's going to accommodate the bridges, the bridges will be GB2 zoning. Again, Discovery will be probably MF3, that's what we've chosen at this point. Again, Discovery will be probably MF3, is what we've chosen at this point. Again, on Discovery, they're anticipating to meet the code at 850 and above, again, one and two bedroom units. Variance J, this is really an issue of mixed use and their large product. This variance basically states that in Castle Hills, that no more than 5,000 multifamily units will be put on the ground in Castle Hills that stand alone. So in other words, if it's above retail and the commercial use, it will not count toward the 5,000 to date. And again, the code requirement in the land use section under the 96 agreement, in section six, basically states that no more than 250 acres of the lands be developed for multifamily units with a density of no less than 20 units per acre. I think in this case, with the mixed use above the commercial uses, probably need to differentiate, differentiate between the two. Just as a, of reference, they already have 952 units on the ground with Platinum and Aurora, and the tour, Aurora is up, is up here at, at 544 and 121, we saw this on the tour, and of course Platinum is out here on Windhaven in the Josie area over here. Between those two, there's already 952, so obviously, if you look at the numbers and whatnot, they can come up to around 4,000 in Discovery standalone apartments. Then they will still hold the 20 units per acre, and that's been what they've done, that's what they've done with their other, other products, and that's what they'll, they'll maintain, or actually it'll be a lot less, because if you go back to the slide and look at what they're doing with the water and all the greenery and whatnot in Discovery, it'll probably actually be less, be lumped in all the acres there on Discovery. Mixed use, it's kind of a, kind of a different, different cat, because you have, on the same five acres, you've got retail and stuff below it, but you have multifamily above it, so it's not too conventional to, to talk about mixed-use apartments per acre, because you have, you can't count the same acre twice, so hence the variance of what we're dealing with here is just to stick with the 5,000 at 20 units per acre. We see no problems with the infrastructure at this point with water, sewer, streets, and drainage. We haven't identified any huge financial problems with their mixed-use design in the bridges. And again, the density of mixed use in the bridges is, it's a council decision, we don't see anything tangible from staff, but that's more of a council issue. This is the bridges, again, defining that area, what we're talking about, of really a density that's not really called out. It's going to have over a million square feet of retail and service and restaurant and office and medical, but again, you know, probably four or five stories here or there. What will happen in year 14, 16, we don't know. So this is really y'all's call on this one. I will tell you that I failed to say, for Discovery down to the south, they're going to put 400 units on the ground about every 18 months. If you do the math, they won't approach 4,000 units for 14, 15 years. So it's something that may happen, and who knows, it may not. None of us know what's going to happen, but that's the pace.
Mayor, I could, I'd like to take you on to a closed session.
Right, so we need to, they'd be under the consultation with attorney, section government, Texas government code in section 5514071, consultation term, we're now going to a closed session. I could ask everyone.
They all were the same. There's no differentiation other than the apartment parking.
Okay. So when I look at the number, am I looking at what the anticipated demand would be, or am I looking what?
Correct.
Okay.
You're looking at, based on the touch warrants there.
Am I looking at the chart backwards? It's the lower, why is the lower number, lower, lower number?
This is the 1.65, this is normal apartments, they base it upon the number of units in the apartment complex, in the residential. This is based on 1.65 per unit, this is based on one per one bedroom.
96, okay, this would be 96.
A lot of the reason I'm seeing a lower number is because we're only talking one and two bedrooms.
One and two bedrooms, and it's the same rate with Bell Madera. Yeah, it's a good question, good question.
You confirmed it was a good question.
It was a good question.
I know, I know what you mean, we got it.
Put that in a minute. Any other questions on this?
Okay, now we're going to go ahead and go to the, move to the regular agenda. Item one is public hearing. Item three is a public hearing, and once again, we're being recommended to be continued.
Have they given us any time at the Attorney General's office?
We expect to have this on the 9th agenda. The Attorney General, we believe, has time to look in for us.
Okay.
Yes, we are, and I know through this.
Move on to item four.
Mayor, ready? I was talking with staff about this one, and I'd like to pull it for a couple of reasons. Number one, so we can talk a little bit about it, because I think this ties really well into a good first step on some of the 2025 discussions that we had. But the other piece was, and maybe Donna, you can give us a little more clarity on that, that 20% component.
In your backup in the resolution, it calls for a 20% match. We understand that if we are, if we were to offer a 25% match, that would increase our likelihood of getting the grant. So we do have funding available for the 25%, so if the council agrees with that change, we would just need to do that, change that resolution out when you do the motion.
And in dollar terms?
It'd be a half a million. We do have that money available in our 4B account. We've set that money aside for trails over time. And Bob has the actual maps to show, he can share with you. This is a significant trail addition in that it meets the Trail Master Plan, and a major spoke in the Trail Master Plan, and it falls in line with a recommendation that came out of the 2025 Committee, the Connectivity Committee. Bob, do you want to?
This is a trail that we showed you at the retreat, is a short-term trail. This map that we just handed out to you shows it a little bit better than the backup material that was a two-page location map. Here, we're just, we're showing what's taking place now along the rail line for one of our main connectors along the DCTA. Over here is the Garden Ridge Trail that, that we had talked about being north-south connector and being a major component of our, our spine trail. What, what really helps us in applying for this grant is it ties several things in together. It's going to help us get more points toward that. We're tying in here to the rail station, working with text out for the crossing up, up through the park mitigation at Hidden Lake Park, we get the bridge with text out that's going to tie into Highland Village, so then we have more of a regional trail system tying into, to other cities. And then we're going to come down Garden Ridge headed south, and as we do this, if you recall, we talked about it being an enhanced sidewalk, because we don't have any room to do anything else other than that. But along with that, we're going to have street markings for a shared bike lane. It's not going to be a dedicated bike lane, but it's just going to provide markings so that the vehicles know that there could be bikes riding up and down the street, which they already do to some extent. So that's going to come on down, and then we have the opportunity to tie in just north of 407 along the utility easement, tie back in to an existing park and trail over it at Highland Park. As we come down to 407, the trail will tie into shopping area, there's, there's pharmacies, there's grocery stores, other businesses through there. Down south of 407, we'll cross the railroad track as just an enhanced trail, again, with the on-street pavement markings for a shared lane. Then we'll go to the center of the median, the wide Garden Ridge median that we talked about before, and we'll come down through that, and then when we get, get down to Valley Ridge, I'm sorry, Valley Parkway, it'll come over and tie in to Civic Circle. And what that does over there, it, it ties into everything we have at Civic Circle, the post office, the government building, the rec center, and the library, so there's a lot of connectivity there. Also coming down, it ties into an elementary school and a middle school, and we'll extend it south of Valley Parkway to tie into existing trails that ties into Bella Woods Park, so there's, there's a lot of connectivity all the way through there that I think will get us a lot of points and help us with a successful proposal.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bob.
So I'd like to see us pull that.
Okay. Item eight, and talk a little bit about that, this is the...
Yes, sir, and Mr. Petty is here. I had conversations with the council concerning the way we would handle the many, many projects laid out in our 2025 plan, lots of economic development projects, major initiatives, and my choice was to not fill my assistant city manager position, but to use consulting services to better focus on these big moves, as we call them in the 2025 plan. Certainly major initiatives, like the lake development project, like the redevelopment of I-35. I do believe that you need a very high level of expertise, it would be very difficult for me to hire at that salary rate from the outside. And so for that reason, I'm recommending to you tonight that we hire a company, Petty and Associates. Mr. Petty is very well-known in the metropolitan area and has a great deal of experience. Mr. Petty is here, and he's hiding on the back row. He never hides, and could respond to any questions that you might have, okay, or me.
Are there any questions?
Don't be shy, Trent.
I'm not, I promise. Nice to see you all.
Good to see you, sir, thanks for coming.
You bet.
Good night. Any questions on it? Item four. Okay. Item nine, unless somebody wants to, I just want everybody to make sure, so. Item nine.
On this particular item, we did receive a letter from Kim Lee Horn, and they did withdraw their request.
Do we need to have a motion to accept? No, we don't, just don't do it.
You don't have to take it from the table and postpone it definitely?
And you can, if you want to, you don't have to.
Okay. I'll just read the deal, and say, then let, actually, no, no action. Item 10. Only went over further.
Bob's.
Item 11.
These are the same waivers that were approved last year for the chocolate sway event, very successful with them. Does it run?
I'm sorry, can we go back to number 10?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
When the motion is made, if someone could also include adopting the standards and details that are set forth in the staff's memorandum, because there are so many details to the variances that they want, that we just thought internally it would be easier to, instead of listing them all out, here in the administrative comments, if we just made a motion to approve the variances if you choose to, and then adopt what's written out in the recommendations, standards, details, and commentaries in the staff memorandum.
Is there someone that'd like to take that motion?
I'll do it.
Anything else on that? Okay, back to item 12.
Just the final areas left in Dallas County, your Denton maps were approved earlier. David, I don't, that was approved, the Denton?
Yeah, Denton County was done back in 2011, so now we're just catching up with the Dallas.
Item 13.
This item actually fits well in with the, if you approve Mr. Petty's contract tonight. We did receive a letter from Lynn Jackson requesting a nine-month extension to their six-month right of first refusal. Staff is recommending that you not approve that nine-month extension and that you give Mr. Petty time to analyze all options that are available to the city at this point in time.
Which would include their option also.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't include them from, just paying just nine, first, right of first refusal.
It's no longer exclusive, that is correct, Mayor.
Well, they didn't actually come up with an option, did they, other than that original proposal?
They developed a business plan, and that business plan, once that was approved, kicked off that six-month right for them to decide to become the master developer. Instead, they requested a nine-month extension.
Right, so what I'm just saying is that it's not precluding them from presenting something and adopting something.
Continuing, yes, correct.
To work with it, but it's saying it's not a first, so...
It's no longer exclusive.
Exclusive, right.
Correct.
Item 14.
This is an interesting item. This dates back to assessments that were actually leveled, levied in the Castle Hills District 1F back in 2008. So your assessments were levied, and then, like in many developments, there were some changes made in the size of lots. And when those changes were made, basically what happened was that the assessment amount was higher than it should have been. The Attorney General's office has... The Attorney General's Office has reviewed this item, and this correction is what you see before you. The remaining properties are owned by a bright subsidy, and they will be subject to this higher assessment, and they are the only ones that will receive notice. So it's somewhat of a strange cleanup in my mind, but it is the one directed by the Attorney General's Office. Can I explain all that correctly, Drew?
Yes, ma'am, you did. Madam manager, I'm going to wait to say that.
I don't want to be called a madam.
Okay, and item fifteen. On item fifteen, and I'll re-elaborate a little bit, but the RTC is, as I'm sure you all saw, the letter from Paul actually sent it out, I believe, initially about how they changed up the...
Cluster.
Cluster.
Cluster. And we are now with Highland Village and Flower Mount, which to me makes more sense. It's kind of what we'd asked for, and so that's a good thing. Did have some communication with Mayor Pat Davis in Highland Village, and he is in favor of keeping Rudy on there as our representative of the cluster. And he is currently an alternate in the cluster that he is in, or was in. And he has said he's willing to be the alternate in this one. And Rudy said he hasn't been attending the meetings and stuff and sees him there all the time, so that would kind of be my recommendation. Do you have anything else you want to?
Now, it's just that these groups are subject to change every two years, and for the last three times, it's changed. So I know there's been some comments made that subsidies want to rotate, and we had five in the cluster last year. They want to rotate so over a 10-year period, they would get it done. But you don't stay in anything more than two years usually, or at least the group that changes. And it's based on population. They've got 44 people representing the total population, and as long as the area keeps expanding, they're not going to hopefully expand much more because we can't fit in one room hardly now anyway. So there's going to be more people represented by one person in the room. And right now, Lewisville is in a group that, Lewisville by itself has the majority of the votes, which was not the case last year. It may not have been the case two years before that also.
And Rudy is willing to serve.
Yeah, I am willing to serve instead.
You have a question, Ron?
Okay. Anything else, counsel? Julie?
Yes, sir.
Put the money in your pocket.
Okay, here we go. At seven o'clock, we do have a forum call, City Council at order. First item on the agenda is invocation laid by Councilman Tooney and the pledge to both the American and Texas flags, led by Councilman Ferguson.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. He opened it. I didn't look. I hope I don't have to take notes. I use my pledge to the Texas flag if I need it. There's nothing over that old thing. No, it's empty.
Good to see you.
We have a special proclamation we want to do tonight just to kind of bring everyone's attention and awareness of a particular time of year which we set aside for remembrance and trying to make sure that we honor those who put their lives on the line each and every day, make sure that we're safe here in our home community, and make sure that those around us are taken care of also. So with that, Officer Lane, I'd like to present you this proclamation. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lewisville Police Department, and whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 39 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 100 officers killed in 2013 and 186 officers killed in previous years. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the entire Lewisville City Council and citizens, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2014, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Lewisville, and urge all citizens to make every effort to express their benefit and express their heartfelt appreciation to the men and women who have sacrificed their lives to guard us and our loved ones against all who will violate the law. Proclaim this fifth day of May of 2014.
I could give you opportunity to say a few words if you'd like. I could give you opportunity to say a few words. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
First off, I just want to thank the council, the mayor, and the citizens as well for this proclamation. I mean, it means a lot, especially as a supervisor. We get a lot of people take time to complain, but not too many people take time to show their appreciation. So we're very thankful as a organization. I want to share a quick story. The last two months, I spent in a management college, and I wasn't around a whole lot of cops, just a small little room of 25 of us, and wasn't around the sirens and the lights and everything else. Well, my first week back, last week, one of the first calls the dispatchers got on the radio, and I think they called every unit we had to go down to the mall. You may have heard about the, there was a scare of an active shooter at the mall. Turned out to be a false claim by a witness. They witnessed a robbery and thought it was something else. But what they were saying over the radio was multiple gunshots fired and people running from the building. Well, in this day and age, you can only think of one thing. So the officers and fire department as well are just going down there as fast as they can, as safely as they can do so, to get to the mall. And it kind of made me sit there and think, I've got half my units going down to the mall, and the rest of the population is running away from it. And it really makes you think of just how, it reminds you of how many risks that these officers and firefighters are willing to assume in, you know, justifiable emergency that way. But this proclamation kind of reminds you of not only the ones that get hurt doing so, but also the ones that maybe that risk wasn't so great, but yet they took the same chance anyhow to get to that emergency. A couple of years ago, Assistant Chief Taylor was seen walking around the halls with his arms draped over with these posters. And as he walked into the briefing room, he'd hang one up, and he'd hang one up to the report-writing room into the hallways. Just anywhere you turned, you saw one of these posters. And if you remember the pictures of Officer Tamile's crash in 2004, very similar. These cars were unrecognizable as police cars. And the message behind that was, with the little logo on every one of them, said below 100. And the more we learned about this nationwide initiative, we found out that in the last 10 years, 150 officers on average are killed in the United States. The goal, obviously, is by the title, is to get below 100. Ever since 2001, of course, it was a bad year, but ever since then, it's been hanging around that 150 mark. But I mentioned a couple of years ago that below 100 kicked off. The last two years, I want to share those numbers with you. 2012, well, I'll tell you this, 2011 was up there, 179, well above the average. 2012, below 100's big and in the headlines, 125. 2013, 105. We're five away from making that goal. So, of course, the whole point of that is hopefully someday the officers won't have so many names etched in that granite that you mentioned down there in DC, and they can be here to enjoy Police Week and continue to serve. So we're very appreciative. Thank you.
And what was also awesome in that proclamation, I thought, was it recognized the family members. Because I know you, as well as the rest of your new members, know that you couldn't do half of what you do because you wanted the support of your family, your wives and children and family that take care of you too. We appreciate them.
Absolutely.
We'll have to move that also.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is item one, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from general business to Old Town Center Business on 0.329 acres located at 125 North Mill Street, further identified as original town of Lewisville, Lot 12 and Lot 11, east 50 feet, Block 6, as requested by Caroline Barin of Bridal Boutique. The property owner, the property is located at 125 North Mill Street and had been used as a retail store until the previous owner recently relocated. Ms. Barin has purchased the property and is planning to use it as a part of her expanding bridal, retail bridal wear business. Retail is an allowable use under either zoning category. However, she is requesting the designation of OTC to be compliant with the Old Town Master Plan's recommended zoning for the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by vote of 5-0 at their April 15, 2014 meeting. Recommendation is that City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Did not have any cars, speaker cars fit out? Does any council member have any questions? Entertainer motion to close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve is presented.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented.
Second.
A second by Councilman Tierney. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the .329 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from general business district zoning to Old Town Center Business District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from single-family residential R-7.5 to Old Town Mixed Use 1 on 0.166 acres located at 220 West Walter Street, further identified as original town of Lewisville, Lot 2, west 65 feet of north 88 feet, and Lot 3, east 20 feet of north 88 feet, Block 1, as requested by Daniel Tosconus, I'm sorry, the property owner. The property is located at 220 West Walter Street and has one single-family home on the lot. Mr. Tosconus is interested in redeveloping the property in the future and has applied for Old Town Mixed Use on 1, Old Town Mixed Use 1 zoning to allow more residential development options. Old Town Mixed Use 1 is the recommended zoning for the property as shown in the Old Town zoning plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by vote 5-0 at their April 15, 2014 meeting. Did not have any cars being wanted to speak. Entertain motion, close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilman Ferguson to close public hearing?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Gilmore?
One more time, Mayor.
Did you have anything that you wanted to do on this?
Oh, the consent agenda? Yeah, I'd like to see if...
No, 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 this is item number two, the public hearing.
Not move to close.
We've done that.
Okay.
Did you have any recommendations as to the action that we take on this item now?
Okay, you caught me off guard. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Recommendation is to approve. There we go. I'm sorry. We have a recommendation by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the .166 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from single-family residential R-7.5 district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use 1 district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is continued public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5. Recommendation is that council continue the public hearing until May 19, 2014. Councilman Tierney?
Move to continue the public hearing until May 19, 2014.
Second. Second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is continued public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7. Again, on this item, the recommendation is that council continue the public hearing until May 19, 2014. Councilman Tierney?
Move to continue till May 19, 2014.
Second. Have a motion to continue to May 14, 2014 by Councilman Tierney. Have a motion to continue till May 14, 2014 by Councilman Tierney. A second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Citizens, Visitors Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No more, no formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did not have anyone fill out any speaker cards. Next item is the Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any cards filled out, but Councilman Gilmore did ask that we pull Item 7. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 7.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to pull the consent, I mean, to pass the consent agenda with the exception of Item 7. A second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7 is Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the City to Submit a Grant Application to the North Central Texas Council of Government's Regional Transportation Council to obtain reimbursement funding for the construction of Garden Ridge Trail. The North Central Texas Council of Government's Regional Transportation Council approved approximately $28 million for the current transportation alternatives program called for projects on February 13, 2014. Park and Leisure Services intends to submit a transportation alternative project application for the Garden Ridge Trail project, and the grant application requires a council resolution in the form as proposed. The trail plant is still under design with current construction costs estimated at $1,800,000 to $2,000,000. Recommendation is that Council approve the resolution as set forth above caption. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, as we looked at the 2025 plan, one of the big ideas that came from that was extending the green, and it's also coming from our Parks Master Trails Program. I don't know, Mr. Monahan, would you mind giving just a little description of what we're looking to propose?
Yes, sir. We're really excited about this segment of our spine trail and think we have an excellent opportunity to be successful with our grant application. This starts up at the north end and ties into the Garden Ridge crossover that Tech Dot is going to provide for us, over into the DCTA rail station, and then another major spine trail that we're going to have north and south throughout the community that parallels the DCTA rail line. Up in that corridor as well, it gives us the opportunity to tie in with Highland Village with some improvements that are being made up there with Tech Dot, with the bridge over into their parkland just north of there. From there, we're going to come down south with an enhanced trail, enhanced sidewalk, which means it's going to be a wider than normal sidewalk. Instead of the four to five feet in width, it'll be eight feet with on-street, bike, shared lane, pavement markings. So, bikes can go on the roadway, and it'll be signed for safety for them. And then we'll have the pedestrian walkways coming down south till we get to Garden Ridge. I'm sorry, 407. In that area, it's exciting because we can tie into the neighborhood grocery store, pharmacies, some other businesses, restaurants. We'll continue south of 407. At that point, we'll go over into the median where we can and provide a 10-foot trail down the median, but also continue the pavement markings for the shared bike use on the roadway. It'll continue south to Valley Parkway and come over down Valley Parkway and tie into Civic Circle. Along that route, we connect with an elementary school as well as a middle school, and then down into Civic Circle, which has the Denton County Government Buildings. It has the post office, the recreation center, and the library. So, there's a lot of connectivity through there, and we're very excited about the possibility of being able to quickly have this trail on the ground that was a major component of the vision 2025.
Thank you, sir.
Did you have anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Item 7 with a 25% match. That's really a difference of $100,000, and it would be funded out of the 4B funds that are already set aside for trails. So, I think it's a prudent maneuver to get our dollars to stretch a little further on this.
Second?
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented, second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9 is a tabled item, consideration of variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-149, screening walls for Windell Meadows addition, a 60.803 acre parcel zoned estate townhouse with 232 single-family detached lots and four HOA-maintained right-of-way areas located on the northeast quadrant of FM 2281 and FM 544, as requested by John Hokum, P.E. of Kimberly-Horn Associates Incorporated, representing the property owner. The applicant has asked that this item be pulled, and so pursuant to that letter that we received from the applicant, there is no action to be taken on this item. Next item is Item 10, consideration of 10 variances to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement related to various development requirements for the proposed REM development located in District 1-H, as requested by Bright Realty, the owner. The proposed REM project consists of approximately 362 acres, divided into two distinct subdevelopments. The bridges at the REM will provide a unique urban shopping and entertainment district that will include over 1 million square feet of mixed-use development in addition to over 1,500 residential units. Adjacent and south of the bridges will be the multifamily development known as Discovery at the REM. Approximately 4,000 units are proposed for this development, which encompasses approximately 272 acres. Due to the unique mixed-use of this urban design of the REM, 10 variances are being requested that are summarized, including: A, public water lines under pavement; B, different species of trees; C, is alternative tree and landscaping plan; D, calculation for landscaping; E, alternative parking plan; F, loading zones; G, paving materials; H, turning lanes; I, dwelling unit sizes; and J, mixed-use development. Recommendation is that City Council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above and adopt the standard details and commentary in the staff support memorandum dated May 5, 2014. Have two cards here filled out, one by Eric Stanley and one by Brian Dench, and they both are here, they're not really willing to speak, but they're here to answer any questions if council might have any questions. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Move to approve the variances as requested and presented and adopt the standards, details, and commentary in the staff support memorandum dated May 5, 2014.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is Consideration of a Variance to Lewisville Code of Ordinances 2-201, waiver of special event permit fees in the amount of $1,479.87, and waiver of MCL Grand Equipment Rental Fees in the amount of $5,115.50 for a total fee waiver of $6,595.37. Approval of an in-kind support using city staff and equipment related to Chalk This Way, festival to be held May 17, 2014. Chalk This Way, a family-oriented outdoor activity that was previously held two years in the colony, will return to Old Town Lewisville for the second year on Saturday, May 17, which is next Saturday. Correct, yes. City Council approved award of an arts support grant in the amount of $9,194 from fiscal year 2014. The event organizer is seeking additional support in the form of fee waivers and in-kind assistance. Recommendation is that Council approve the request to the variance special event and rental fees and approve in-kind support as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Durham?
The request then to waive the special event fees is laid out.
Second?
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for that event, it was a good event last year. Item 12 is Consideration of an Ordinance Amending Lewisville City Code, Section 5.5-6, Basis for Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Hazard Within the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, as requested by staff. The Federal Emergency Management Agency has recently completed the new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map for Dallas County, including the portion of the City of Lewisville within Dallas County. The new FEMA-informed study, Dallas County, will become effective on July 7, 2014, and the FEMA Regional Office must approve the City of Lewisville's Flood Damage Protection Ordinance referring to the new FIS and FIRM no later than the July 7, 2014 effective date in order for the City of Lewisville to avoid suspension from the National Flood Insurance Program. The new FIS and FIRM establish revised flood elevations as well as flood plain and floodway boundaries for the portion of the City of Lewisville within Dallas County. Recommendation is that Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve. Second?
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 5.5, Section 5.5-6, Basis for Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Hazard of the Lewisville City Code by amending the language to reference a new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map, providing a savings clause, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Item 13 is Consideration Request Submitted by Win Jackson for a Nine-Month Extension of the Right of First Negotiation Under the Master Development Agreement. The City entered into a master development agreement with Win Jackson, Inc. in November 2010. In this agreement, Win Jackson was given a right of first negotiation for a period of 180 days following formal approval of the business plan. The business plan was accepted by the City Council on October 21, 2013, marking April 21, 2014, the last day of the 180-day period. A request was received from Win Jackson requesting a nine-month extension of the right of first negotiation to complete various issues. Recommendation is that Council deny the ninth month extension as requested by Win Jackson. Councilman Gilmore? I do have, no, go ahead, I'm sorry. Don't have a card.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I don't have a card to speak up.
No, okay. I'm moved to approve as written that we go ahead and not extend that nine-month extension.
That's complicated.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to deny the nine-month extension as requested.
Second?
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is Consider and Prove a Resolution Accepting and Amended and Supplemental Services and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for the Levy of Assessments for Authorized Improvements in the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 4 in the City of Lewisville, setting a date for public hearing, authorizing the publication of notice, and enacting other provisions relating hereto. City Council approved a resolution on April 2, 2007, authorizing the creation of Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 4. On May 21, 2007, a service and assessment plan and assessment role was adopted. Over the years, as part of the development process, lots were subdivided into different sizes than had originally been anticipated in the original service and assessment plan. The Attorney General has determined that the City must have a new notice and public hearing process. This resolution is required to call a public hearing for May 19, 2014, and authorize notice of such hearing. Recommendation is that City Council consider and approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. I do have a speaker card here filled out by Drew Keith. He's just here to answer any questions if anyone should have any. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the resolution, call a public hearing for May 19, and authorize notice of such hearing.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson? Second by Councilman Durham? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is Consideration of a Resolution Nominating Representative and an Alternative Representative to the North Central Texas Council of Government's Regional Transportation Council. The Regional Transportation Council of the North Central Texas Council of Government allocates seats on the council by region and city population. Recent changes in the bylaws created new cluster seats. Lewisville is now in a region along with Highland Village and Flowerman. The current representative to the Regional Transportation Committee is Councilman Durham, who has indicated his willingness to serve again. In addition, Patrick Davis, the mayor of Highland Village, is interested in serving as the alternate for these three cities. He was an alternate before the recent change in the bylaws in his previous cluster. Recommendation is that City Council consider a resolution nominating a representative and an alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Government's Regional Transportation Council. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Rudy Durham as our representative and Mayor Patrick Davis as our alternative.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings reports. Nika? Bob? Good luck on the grant, sir. It's a lot of good hard work there, so I'm sure you'll get it through there. Appreciate it. Chief Taylor?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to remind everybody that this week will be our 7th Annual Keeping Tradition Alive Symposium. Kicks off this Thursday morning. We'd like to invite you and the rest of the council for breakfast at 7 o'clock at the Hilton Garden Inn. And our opening ceremony will begin around 8:15. If you can attend, we'd love to have you. And then on Friday night, it's our jam session in Old Town, if that's what you want to call it. That, the gates open at 6 o'clock, and the first band session will begin at 7 o'clock, and we'd love to have you out for that event as well. Been watching the weather, it looks like the weather's going to be good for Friday, so we're looking forward to it. We actually are, have a full attendance again this year as far as our signees for the symposium, and the Hilton Garden Inn is full, and we're spilling over into the neighboring hotels, so that's a good thing.
That's great. We have, we have these gentlemen coming, maybe ladies and gentlemen, coming from all over the country too, I believe, on this, don't we?
Yes, we have firemen, male and female firefighters that are members of their respective departments, popping drum bands, and then members of their honor guard. They come from all over the United States. We get them from as far away as Wyoming even. So, this one group drives in every year from Wyoming, and they drive. They don't fly, they drive in a van. So, they're committed to it, they come every year. Again, we keep filling it up with attendance and overbooking as far as our attendance goes, and that just tells me we're continuing to put a good product out there, that the guys are coming back every year to learn more. So, would love to have you if you can make it.
You bet. It's a great event, and every time I do attend, I, all of them just give us accolades for what a wonderful job you do, and we appreciate the way y'all put it on. Linda? Chief Taylor? Well, you never know, we might get some rain, but we might not.
Looks like maybe Thursday is our best chance, but other than that, there's just nothing else reports. We haven't changed our capacity of our lake and the level either, so we just need more rain.
And Carol, I'll tell you too, that I'm getting a lot of good comments from people about all the sidewalks are going on, and they want to know what's happened. I said, "Nothing, it's just that area of the town right now." I said, "We've been doing them all over the city, but when a particular area gets hit with a bunch of them, a lot of people, "What's happening there?" And I said, "No, it's just a plan we've got to do this entire city." So, we're getting good comments on that and appreciate the work.
And that's what we try to do when we go in and fix one. We try to do that area so the resident can see a bigger change.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Gina, it's good to see you here this evening. Do you have any comments? You sure? Nothing, huh? Oh, come on. Donna used to. Welcome aboard, Gina, I'm glad to have you here. Brenda? Mr. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Two quick ones. On Saturday, the 17th, at 9:30 in the morning, we have Paws in the Park. So, that'll be at the Animal Services Center there on the north end of Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park. It'll be a great time, bring your pet, or be prepared to take one home with you. Also, we have a wonderful program that I don't know if it's gotten out there as much as it probably should. We have a poet laureate program. We are looking for a poet laureate for the City of Lewisville, and applications are due by May 23 to the city. You can find it on the city website. There is a stipend for that selectee, and this is, this is serious stuff, folks. I understand that we- this is, this is serious stuff, folks. I understand that we have a Texas or a former Texas poet laureate who is actually doing some of the judging to determine who this folk will be, and it'll be really cool to have somebody with that kind of writing and caliber, and maybe they'll even kick off a council meeting or two. So that's all I have, Mayor.
It's not me. Donna, welcome aboard. Glad to have you up here tonight. Congratulations and look forward to many years of great leadership from you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any comments or anything?
No, just, you know, Mr. King was always quiet. I will be too.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Got some MCL Grand activities to put on notice here. First of all, May 24, Texas Tunes Series continues with Kelly Willis and Bruce Robison. I wear two incongruous hats as the emcee of those concerts and the symphony, and I actually have something that night with, that afternoon with the symphony. So this is my first Texas Tunes that I'll miss, and I don't know how long, and I am sorry to miss it because I actually own Kelly Willis recordings. Chalk This Way you mentioned is coming up on May 17. I'm very happy to see them here back for the second year. Worked pretty hard to drag them away from City of the Colony, and they've been pretty happy since they came here. So, and it's a great family event. It's free. Admission is free, and very much for the whole family, activities for everybody. Annual Toady Awards will be presented by Actors Conservatory Theater on May 17. Don't have a time for that, but you can always go to mclgrand.com. Visual Arts League Friday Acoustic Jams continue. If you haven't been, you ought to go. It's a lot of fun. And in the art gallery, we still have the Wilds of Texas exhibit, which is excellent. It's a lot of fun, very interesting stuff. That lasts through May 24. Gallery's open Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and always during public performances. And in the hallway on the opposite side, Spontaneous 2, which is an exhibit by Visual Arts League, through, also through May 24, same times apply. Go to mclgrand.com, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Julie?
Just a reminder that tomorrow's the last day to early vote, and Election Day will be on Saturday, and all voting is going on at the annex unless you're a Dallas County resident, and then you'll need to go to the Copel Town Center.
We do want to encourage everybody to get out and vote. I took my mother and voted this afternoon, and I think we only at the time, at that time, and it was late afternoon, had about 400, right at 500 people vote. So encourage everyone to get out and vote for your city council and school board representatives. Officer, once again, appreciate you being here tonight. It's an honor to have you and serve us. We appreciate all that you and your team members do every day. Thank you, sir. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, and in keeping in tradition with the poet laureate, we'll just say, here's to it, because if you don't do it, you'll never get to it, to do it again.